Here. Commissioner Landon.
Present.
Commissioner Quivula.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner McKinley.
Present.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yep.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online, please keep yourselves on mute during this portion of the meeting. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide testimony. Later during the regular session, there will be time for public comments to the planning commission. I also wanted to remind everybody to not use the chat unless you would like to, if you're having technical difficulties or if you would like to speak later on in the regular session. And before we begin, I would like to welcome Commissioner Buck to the planning commission. And I wanted everybody to just go around and do a round of introductions. It's never ideal to meet over Zoom or to start your public service career over Zoom. But let's try to make it as friendly as we can and welcome Commissioner Buck on. And we now have a full commission, which is awesome. So let's just give our names, maybe how long we've been on the commission and whatever else you would like to add. I'm Sophie McKinley. I've been on the commission for almost three years now since 2018. I'm from the East Coast originally and went to UVO to get my bachelor's in planning. And I work for the city of Eugene in long range planning. And I'll kick it over to Vice Chair Landon.
Commissioner Andy Landon, I've been on for, I'll be honest, I don't even keep track, I think five years. And I'm an IT nerd with peace health.
Thanks, Commissioner Landon. How about Commissioner Quivula?
My name's Mike Quivula. I'm a retired land surveyor. I'm in my second term about midway through. So I'll be terming out in 2023. And welcome to our new commissioner. Good to have you here.
How about Commissioner Gill?
Hi, welcome. I'm Curry Gill. I've been on the commission for almost three years. And I work for the state Oregon Parks Recreation.
Thanks, Commissioner Gill. How about Commissioner Bergen?
I am Commissioner Grace Bergen. I have been on for three years. The first portion of me serving was actually taking over someone's position. And so I returned. So I was just reelected into my first term, which is interesting to say. So I have a long time of potential to serve on the planning commission. I am a real estate broker. And for that, you will, because of that, you will hear me say potential conflict of interest very regularly. Because anything that has to do with real estate has a potential of conflict of interest for me. So I have been here my whole life and looking forward to get to work with you and get to know you a little bit more. Thank you for serving.
Thanks, Commissioner Bergen. How about Commissioner Salazar?
Thank you and welcome to Commissioner Buck. My name is Matt Salazar and I was previously the rookie. So no longer in that role, I've been, I was elected on to, I joined the commission in January, so going on seven months strong now. And yeah, it's been a great seven months so far. So we're, we're happy to join you in our work. I am an asset and project manager at Cornerstone Community Housing. And I've lived in Springfield for two years. I moved here from Portland to attend University of Oregon for my masters in nonprofit management. So yeah, welcome.
Thank you, everyone. And how about we hear from Commissioner Buck himself?
Hi, thank you, everyone. My name is Andrew Buck. I've been on the commission for about two weeks, maybe three. I don't know, three. We'll call it three. And I, I was excited when this opportunity got presented to me. I grew up in Eugene, moved to Springfield. My wife's a teacher in the Springfield School District and my family's here. And I professionally, I work in insurance. So like Commissioner Bergen, I'm still figuring out what potential conflicts I may or may not have. At the moment, I don't see a whole lot. I just see a lot of, depending on where we go and how our work, our work takes us. I mean, there's, there's some things, but not a lot at this point, I don't think. But that's, that's a little bit about me.
Great. Thank you. And welcome to the commission. And because you've been oriented, you've already met some of the amazing staff at the city and you'll just continue to meet more. And with that, I'll hand it over to one of them, Mark Rust, for a development code update project, an update on the development code update project.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley and commissioners. For the record, I am Mark Russ, senior planner with City of Springfield. And Ben, I feel like I might provide a little bit of background for Commissioner Buck. I know I did brief Commissioner Buck on this project. So I won't go into too much, assuming hopefully you're a little bit up to speed. If there's questions, I'm happy to go into more background. I do intend to basically just jump into where we left off last time from the last work session. And we're in a series of work sessions now over the summer where we are going through the draft code sections that have been released to the public for public review. Over the summer, we've launched a community engagement campaign. And with that, have released a survey as well as some other tools and information on how to engage with the city on the draft code sections. These are drafts and they are the public review draft, which we anticipate to revise based on the community input we get from the broader public as well as things we hear from the planning commission over these work sessions to ultimately develop a public hearings draft. And we will engage with the public hearing, a more formal public hearings process in the fall. And I do see in the chat, and I should have remembered it's in my notes right here. But I will ask that the commissioners go around and do a declaration of, you were just talking about conflicts of interest. In this case, there's only the ability to have a potential conflict of interest, not an actual conflict of interest. And I don't know, our city attorney could potentially explain that further if needed, but it's pretty, we've, we've gotten used to this. I don't know, Mary Bridget, if you want to say anything about the conflicts of interest?
Sure, I can just speak to that quickly. So potential conflict of, under the Oregon government ethics, there are two types of conflicts of interest, actual and potential. In this particular situation, the planning commission commissioners could be faced with a potential conflict of interest because they're making a recommendation to the city council. Your role in a potential conflict of interest is just to announce that you have the potential conflict of interest and then you can still participate. And it's my understanding and at least what I've observed at the council level is that the chair will guide you through each counselor declaring if they have a conflict of interest, potential conflict of interest, and particularly usually that has to do with you own property within the city limits because the value of that property could be impacted by this project.
Thank you, Mary Bridget. With that, we'll go around and declare our potential conflicts of interest. So I do not own any property, so I have no potential conflict of interest. How about we hear from Commissioner Gill?
I do own property in the city, so I have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergen.
Potential conflict of interest being a primary, excuse me, a property owner in Springfield and of course residential realtor.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar.
Yeah, I have two potential conflicts of interest, one being that I own real property in Springfield and the other that I work for a housing developer in Springfield that operates in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Landon.
Potential conflict of interest because I own property in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Quivula.
Exactly the same as Commissioner Landon.
Thank you. And Commissioner Buck?
Well, potential conflict with owning property. I, we write property insurance, so I don't know if that's a potential conflict, but I'll put that out there.
Thank you. And thank you, Sandy, for the reminder. And I'll hand it back over to Mark.
Thank you. And so I'm gonna share my screen tonight. This will be the material from the packet that you received for tonight. And I'm gonna make sure I hopefully get the right screen here. Let's try this. Hopefully you see, maybe I can get a thumbs up, development review and procedures on your screen. Yep, great. Thank you, Commissioner Buck. Yep. And then so, again, so last work session, two weeks ago, we started with a couple of different sections. We went through the minimum development standard section, which I talk about as a little bit of a mini site plan review. And we also went through the actual site plan review section of code. And so tonight, we're jumping into what I generally call the procedures section. This is the development review and procedure section. This is pretty dry stuff, probably. It's the rules about how we process all the applications. Depending on time tonight, I hope that we could move also into through the procedure section and also start potentially jumping into the commercial zoning section and possibly the industrial zoning section. So those are the next ones kind of on the list to move forward to as list listed in your packet. I've also included the same definition section in tonight's packet that I included in the last meeting packet. I'm just including the definition section really more for reference. We can go through it as needed or may go through it in detail at some point. But I just want to have it to refer to if questions come about, up about certain words or meaning of words. And then also attachment five tonight in your packet at the very end is what I call the list of significant code changes. Because of this project, the larger overall development code update project is proposing to update the entire development code and basically starting from scratch, kind of throwing out the old, proposing all new. It's not really possible to do what might traditionally be done for some changes. And that is kind of a tracked changes version or legislative update version where you can see red line changes to the existing code for what's new. So basically, for the most part, it's all new and all the existing will go out. So with that, I'm trying to track the significant changes. And I intend for that list to be added to if there's topics or sections of codes. The commissioners see that they think should be added to that list. I'm happy to continue to add to that list. As well as just through conversations and things that come up, I will just proactively add to this list to identify things that seem to be getting questions or concerns raised about. We did just start the community engagement phase a couple of weeks ago, so we're just starting to hear some comments from the public. I don't really have in terms of a summary of the community engagement so far that just started at least. I don't really have an update as of yet because we really haven't captured much. I haven't gotten any direct emails or any direct phone calls. I did reach out with our community relations staff. I think it was the beginning of last week or shortly after the last planning commission meeting. We had only gotten three survey responses so far. So as we start getting more survey responses, we'll start tabulating those. We did send out electronic updates or e updates to our interested parties list. So I will through the summer here and one of these meetings provide a update, a more thorough update on the community engagement efforts. I did provide a community engagement summary up to the point that we've done over the last three years, how we got to the point of releasing the draft code sections. I'm happy to revisit that at some point as well if needed. But tonight, with all that said, again, this is really intended to familiarize, start familiarizing the planning commission with these draft code sections. So again, you can ask questions now. And as we move to the public hearing process in the fall, you will have at least seen most of this or heard some of it. It's not intended to be deliberations at this point or you not making formal recommendations. Again, I said, I will, you know, consider the planning commissioners' comments as well as the larger public input we receive over the summer and incorporate that into an ultimate public hearings draft. That then you will hold public hearings on and deliberate and ultimately make a formal recommendation on those public hearings drafts later. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'm going to jump into this procedure section. Again, these are the rules on how applications are processed. Just really high level, basically, we have four different application types. You can see them kind of scattered throughout this kind of table of contents. There's the type one procedures. There's type two and type three procedures and then the type four procedures. So those are the four different types of applications that we have. A lot of this is directly regulated by state law. The statewide planning program, as well as to implement the statewide planning program, Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rules direct a lot of the specifics of how of these four types, as well as how we process these four types. Sometimes you will even see citations in our code directly to state law, either Oregon revised statutes or Oregon administrative rules. This talks about right here, state of Oregon statutes and rules. Many of the timelines associated with how we process applications or come directly out of straight law, you'll see, you know, a 30 day processing timelines or notice periods, 120 day time limits, things like this, these timelines all come directly out of state law. So I'm happy to answer questions about stuff as we go through it. Just generally, the, the type one application type is the easiest application type. And the type four is the most difficult or more most onerous, I suppose. The, under state law, there's what's called, I use the term land use decision. Or some people could say permit, what's actually defined as a permit as in the land use realm under state law is something that includes using discretion by the city to decide whether it should be approved or not. So anytime discretion is used, it cannot, it can automatically not be a type one. It has to be a type two, type three or type four. And I think I'll go into the differences of all those, but a type one permit being the easiest can only be used when the terminology is that it's clear and objective. There's only one way to interpret something. And I talk about it in realm of it's either a yes or no answer, yes, it meets it or no, it doesn't. There's no kind of in between or having to gauge and weigh impacts to something to determine if it meets it or not. So that the type one is a pretty straightforward. We sometimes refer to them almost as over the counter approval. It's not truly an over the counter, but sometimes it can be. We have many different types of type one. In response to some of the feedback we received at the last meeting from commissioners, we are working on some diagrams to help visually represent these different four types. Those aren't quite ready for tonight, but I thought I'd go ahead and jump into the section anyway. And I will be providing those visuals at a later meeting and we can revisit some of this when that comes up. So that'll provide kind of a flow chart of the steps involved with the four different types. But type one, it doesn't have a public notice. So the other three types do. So again, type one is the easiest. There's no public notice. So we don't mail out notice to any surrounding property owners. That's pretty typical of other types of applications. And there's, for the most part, there's no appeals. So that would be another component of another land use decision is an appeal of our decision. A type one is so basic and so straightforward, at least under these procedures and under state law. Because there's no discretion used, there's no public notice and no opportunity for an appeal. So those are two pretty strong defining characteristics of the type one. And this, I'm not going to go through all this line by line that you have all this material. If there's sections you want to touch on or hear me talk about in more detail, I'm happy to hear about any of it and make notes. I have provided these track changes drafts for you. There's not so much track changes as there are just kind of, it's a working draft. Some of these comments are left in here on purpose to highlight for you some of the areas that are still not 100% resolved from a staff level. We're hoping to get input on these sections and still kind of wrangling some of these areas internally to figure out, well, where, how should this exactly be? You know, there's decision points to be made. There's options to be chosen in terms of how some of these things may play out. So again, I intentionally left this dialogue here for you to get a sense of some of the areas that are still being worked on or have opportunity to provide decision points or feedback on. So again, if there's any questions about any of that stuff, I'm happy to go into it. I'm not going to touch on all of it though. However, even with that said.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
See, a hand raised from Commissioner Quivula.
Great.
Yes, thank you, Mark. I find the, the comments really useful. So that, please, please keep that up. That's just really helpful to see the discussion there. A quick question regarding the type one procedures. There's a statement about the director may elevate type one to a type two. And then immediately following, there's the discussion of a fee schedule for type two. But it doesn't say who would pay a fee or if there would be a fee assessed for one that the director elevated. So if you could, I'm not sure if that should be in the code or where that should be.
Yeah, that's a great question and it's probably an opportunity for clarification there. I did just read, read that today and thought a similar thought to you. And I'm scrolling down here. It looks like it's on page seven of the code or seven of 39 of attachment one. I don't have the PDF pages in front of me, so hopefully if I'm putting it on the screen here, but so.
Five point 1.305 B and C are the two.
Correct.
Two, correct.
So the difference here is you rightly point out the B is the director, the city deciding to elevate an application to a type two. And in that scenario, an additional fee would not be charged. Where we mentioned the fee under C is that the applicant may elevate it. They may choose to want to elevate it. And in that case, if it's their choice, they are paying the increased fee. So because we mentioned the fee in C, it probably would help to clarify that under B that it wouldn't be charged. You know, I try not to necessarily get too many paths crossed with the fee ordinance because it's not within the development code. But I think it's worth talking about the practice. So I'm gonna just make a note here.
Thank you.
But yeah, good clarification. And for the most part, if you were to read our existing procedures code sections, there is a lot more areas of discretion within the existing procedures where the director or the city has discretion to do certain things. For the most part, a lot of that discretion is tried to be removed from the procedures ordinance. Because it makes it, there's a lot more questions involved than applicants don't know. Well, is the director going to elevate something or is the director gonna use their discretion to do something? We don't know. And so in trying to clarify these rules and make them easier to use and so everybody knows kind of the rules that are going to be played by, a lot of the discretion is removed. And so we're just trying to make it very clear cut that these are the rules. The discretion typically that is remains is primarily for the applicant. They have the discretion to do certain things. In this one case, the discretion for the director does remain. And it is primarily for that reason that I discussed about using discretion or not. And because again, under state law, if we make a land use decision, which we could technically do as a type one, if, and when I say that, what I mean is if we use discretion in making a decision, even if we're only processing it as a type one application, then even though we don't have an appeal process for a type one, somebody could argue that we used discretion and therefore it should be an appealable decision. And they could appeal it to Luba. And the part of the concern or it creates a risk for the city is that if we don't send a notice under state law for a land use decision when we use discretion in making a decision, then the appeal period runs for 10 years. There's no 12 day appeal period or something like that from, because we didn't mail notice. So it talks, state law talks about actual notice. Anyway, so I don't want to get too into the weeds if I don't need to, but I just want to clarify the importance of if the director feels that a type one application is going to use discretion or going to need to use discretion in making it. That's why we've left in this one case, the director's discretion to elevate it. So we don't get into trouble. And really all that means is in elevating it is we would send, we would, the city would kind of absorb the cost of mailing the notice. And then there would be an appeal period to just make sure that, and in that case, once we send the notice, there's a 12 day appeal period and that 10 year kind of open ended appeal period doesn't come into play. So I see a couple of hands. I'm happy to defer to the chair. Or I'm happy to call on the hands as well.
Thank you, Mark. I have Commissioner Landon followed by Commissioner Gill.
Okay, mine is just tiny stuff. I don't even know if you're interested in that, Mark. There's
Yeah, sure.
typing errors, page 11 of 39. Second line includes, you know, at least the copy I had, had includes a spurious letter D.
You said second line, is that in here?
Yeah, B four, second line, B four, second line. See that D right in the middle of the line?
Oh, I do right here.
Just looks weird.
Yeah, thanks. I'm happy to have these typists pointed out. I can't catch it all.
No, you can't.
The more, the more eyes I have on this stuff, the better. So thank you for that. Sure.
Page 28 of 351. And that one just has a sentence structure weird error. So page 28, look for reopening of the record. You could actually just do a control F and reopening of the record and you'd find it.
That would be an easier way. I'm not as super tech savvy, but 28 here.
Yeah. So there's a spot there that says reopening of the record. That's why I do it darn near, I just do it control F of it.
Is that what it is? All right, I'm gonna take your lead here, control F reopening.
Reopening, uh huh.
And that gets me probably.
And there's another one a little further down because what it says is re opening of the record is B.
I'm not seeing it on page 28, but maybe I'm just didn't type it quite exactly correctly. But maybe you could give me a, a letter or number that, of the line that's in here on page 28. Is that right?
Yeah, strange that you don't. Maybe, maybe somebody already fixed it and that's fine. So reopening space of space, the space record. Bingo is B. It just drives me nuts.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, I appreciate that. Okay. And you said there was more of that one.
To probably just add a two B at the discretion. That's my guess.
Or is, is at the discretion of the.
Ah, okay, okay. Yeah.
And that's. I'll relook at all this stuff. I appreciate you pointing it out.
Yeah, that's all I found. Thank you.
Was there another question by Commissioner? Was there another question by Commissioner Gill?
Yeah, so back on page seven, when you're talking about the type one review. You use the word ministerial review.
Correct.
And if that's a legal word we have to use, then I think that's good. But I, it might be worth putting in the definitions because it's kind of a weird word. Like it's not the Ministry of Development. And I, and maybe people who live with us all the time get it, but I don't think it's really clear upfront to regular people, what ministerial means, that it means that it's whatever it does mean. So maybe different language that describes that, or if that's a word that we have to use for whatever reason, if it could be defined.
Yeah, I think that's a great comment for sure, Commissioner Gill. Thank you for that. I, I, I think in my head, the short answer is it's not a word we have to use. So I think.
I didn't, I didn't think so, but there might be something. I don't know. So. And then similar to that, so on page ten of thirty nine, I don't know, were you going to go through more conversation on this, Mark? Or do you want me to just bring up the questions that I?
I'm happy to hear your stuff. I mean, I, I'm, I can go through stuff. I, I don't want to talk the whole time. It's, you know.
I wasn't here at the last meeting where you were doing this, so I wasn't sure the, the approach. But on page ten, where, where we're talking about. There's these two, the two definitions, the one of affordable housing and multifamily residential.
Right.
So can you talk a little bit about why we need these in here? And if they're, because they're only used here and we're trying to get rid of the family terminology. In other places, is there a reason why we can't fix this here and use the same terminology everywhere?
Yeah, excellent question. Thank you for that. And I just flagged this this week as well, having gone back through this. So this was, this whole section B for this hundred day time limit was actually added kind of late in the development of this section. There's a note here from Christina Kras that's kind of a resolved note. She mentions here, this was added at ORS by Senate Bill ten fifty one in two thousand seventeen. Obviously we're late in adding it to our code. But so typically I mentioned the hundred and twenty day time limit. This A section is the typical, what we mostly talk about is a hundred and twenty day time limit. That's what most land use decisions are subject to. This hundred day time limit is brand new to our code. Again, it's about four years old in state law, but it's not as prevalent, it's not used because it is limited to these affordable housing projects or multifamily residential buildings. And so part, so my intent has been to put all the definitions in one section, in the definition section. So you're right, having these here doesn't make a lot of sense of what we're trying to do throughout the code and having them specifically here. So I think there is opportunity to probably move these. And you're also correct, and we've tried to move away from the term family. So instead of saying multifamily residential, we're moving towards multi unit housing. These two terms are specifically defined in state law from that statute and from that legislation. So that's why we've copied them verbatim out of state law here. And we just quite haven't resolved how we want to deal with it. Again, they were added kind of late because Christina Kras, the Assistant City Attorney identified that this section also needed to be added. And so I just kind of plunked it in here. So I, I mean, I think it's a great question. I, I don't have a great answer in terms of, yeah, we're going to move them or we're not. So I, I don't know. There are some other instances, another one I'll just mention, it's kind of related, that's coming up that you'll hear more about. Eventually is the floodplain regulations right now are, we're working on redoing because the federal law stuff changes. And so that's another example where there's very specific federal definitions of, and the one term I'll use as an example is the word development. So how the word or the term development is defined for floodplain regulation is different than how we would define the term development under the, for the rest of our code. So in that one instance, it probably makes sense to have the term development in the floodplain regulation section of the code. Just applicable to that one section. And then still have a different definition of development in the definition section that applies to everything else. So it may be similar here. I just honestly haven't worked this piece out yet. And if you have recommendations, what you think makes more sense. I'm happy to make note of it, but it's definitely something, it's a valid question for sure.
I, I, I was guessing that that might be the case because it felt like it, it was pretty specific. So in some ways, I think it might be better to tie it with this, if this is the only place in the code where these words are used. Because it might get confusing if we have multi unit residential or something in the definitions. And then they're like, well, why are we using this? And, and also to maybe not let it accidentally appear in other places. If it stays here and it's only used here because it applies to the state law or rule or whatever it is. Then it doesn't accidentally start getting trickling in, in other places in the code. So understanding where that comes from, and I don't know if we need any of that context for this. But I, I think, I think it does kind of make sense to keep it specifically here if that's the only place we're going to use it.
And you know, with that said, I think that those are all great comments. And I think there is opportunity. You know, we could reword this to say, say multi unit housing instead of multifamily residential. Again, I, and compare it to our other definition and see if they coincide. So definitely something to continue to work on.
All right, so go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Gill. I was going to move to a different one, so go ahead. Nope, go ahead. I was just saying, I was going to say that Commissioner Quaid was after you in the queue. So just noting that. Okay, thanks. Um, so then on the next page eleven, five point one point four oh. Yeah, that section. So we have the wait, five point one point four zero.
Four zero, four.
So, oh, I didn't finish this. I didn't finish on my notes. So the part about I dang, I should have taken better notes.
Sorry, it could be for, we're in for one oh, it could be, do you know what section it's talking about?
It was on page eleven. And it was letter A. And, and then it rolled into page twelve. So.
Here's A under page eleven. It looks like it goes to number three.
Two and three. So owner of record property. No, that's not what it is. I might have to find this later. Darn, it was a good question too. So then, and under B. Is there, is there a five point one point four zero something on page eleven?
This is page eleven. It looks like it's five point one four two five. And before that would be four two zero.
Zero. So, oh, that's what it is.
So maybe it's here.
Yeah, this is what, okay, so in. I guess this was a little, the section felt confusing. In. I guess like why, I'm not sure what's trying to be explained by two and three and even the last paragraph. So I get that it's trying to explain a type three. But, and I get number one, the process means that you need to have a decision, right? But then I feel like the decision part. The preexisting criteria and con, I don't know, like the explanation of the action and the decision does not provide very much actual context for me. So I'm not sure why it's there, like decisions aren't made randomly. So like, why does it, if the criteria are in the code, maybe it references code criteria as opposed to preexisting criteria, which feels very unclear to me. I don't know. So I don't, I don't have really good examples in there, but maybe if, if other people find it clear and useful, it just sort of felt like they're going to make a decision that made sense, but how the decision comes about? Like what is a concrete fact? Are these criteria in the code? It's sort of opened more questions than it answered for me. And so if I'm looking at this and wanting to know, well, how is this person, how are these people going to make this decision? That didn't really help me very much. It's sort of tho, those three parts were kind of unclear to me. And I can work more on language if you want me to, but but yeah, does that make sense?
It does actually. And so I think just on my initial thought is, again, kind of planners use this stuff all, all the time. And you know, we're trying to make it clear, but it's not, it's, it's difficult stuff. And you guys are more versed in it obviously than a lot of the general public and it's even difficult. So, but I think primarily my thought is in reading this, it's, it's kind of setting the, the process in comparison to a type four. And so why it doesn't really make sense is type four is a different animal altogether where type three is something less. And really the defining characteristics of what's a type four versus a type three can get muddy a little bit, I think sometimes for people. And even for me, honestly, having done this for 20 years, it's, it's like quasi judicial and type three versus type four. And so one of the, and I'll just say, so in thinking about how to provide some context and clarity and explain some of this. One of the original ideas we proposed at the city council towards the beginning of this project was again, to make this code more user friendly. Is to use like user tips or kind of a, a, a box that was like a commentary box within the code. So it's not technically part of the code, but it's like, here's a user tip, how to use the code. And so that's something I think maybe this is a prime area of opportunity to use something like this where we could say, okay. Type one and type two are up here, type three and type four are down here. And so here's a user tip for type three and type four, you know, these are kind of the differences. And I think it was Commissioner Salazar at the last meeting that recommended providing some graphics and explaining the four different types. And again, we're, we are working on those. And even potentially incorporating a graphic like that into the code, a very simplified version of, here's the steps. You know, type one is, like I said, no public notice and no appeal. Type three is definitely a public hearing. It's like public hearing at the planning commission with appeal. And anyway, so I'm thinking of that could be a way to help explain and provide context.
Definitely, the graphic description of this would, would help a lot. And would kind of know like the purpose of that little section. I know that it was talking about the process, but it just felt a little more vague. And then in section B, just below that.
Yep.
And I might be totally off base. I read it a whole bunch of times and it might be in there. But when I was reading it, it says, this is sort of about the decision making and who's making, who's doing the evaluation. And it says type three applications are made by the planning commission, isn't it? The decision and not the application that is made by the planning commission? And that appears in a couple.
Yeah, that's a good clarification of words.
Checking the, I, I think it was. It might have been all of them, but needed that. I got really confused. I was like, wait, what? The Planning Commission doesn't make the applications, so. And then, and then just the figuring out number four. I just a little bit of looking at this section to, and this might be also good as a chart as opposed to, or in addition to this. But it feels a little bit repetitive because you say at one point in number three, the city council has the sole authority for that type. For vacant, vacations and annexations, but then you kind of repeat that again in number four to be really clear. So kind of, if there's a way to separate number four out a little bit more, maybe so it's not bunched together and repeating other sections. Because I think that's where people get a little lost. It's like, wait. What does city council do? What don't they do? And if it's repeated, that gets confusing. And then my last thing was the publication of the notice, the only place to do that is in a newspaper. And I don't know who's still. I mean, can you also do it on the website or require that it's somewhere else in the world besides in the newspaper? Even if you already do it, like the hearings are on the website at least. So I just wanted to throw out. But that was the only kind of notice required was in the newspaper.
Yeah, and I don't want to put Brenda on the spot, maybe Sandy. Off the top of my head, I'm trying to, Brenda does a lot of our noticing. But I think generally my answer is state law still mandates, we publish it in a paper of general circulation. I think is the wording in statute. And so, yeah, thanks Brenda. And so we can go above and beyond and typically do as you're aware of, like Springfield Oregon speaks now is a good example of where we're you know, providing notices and sending links via our interested parties list or on the webpages for projects. And just the, the city's general website has a public notice section. And so I would say we typically do go above and beyond for sure, but we are still mandated by state law to publish it in the paper. So whether we want to kind of, you know, within our own procedures ordinance, require of ourselves that we do more, you know, I think we have that opportunity. It's, it's a bit of a balancing act, but I'll make a note here. So that's this section you were asking about mail notice.
Correct, yeah. Well, it's, yeah, it's not the mailed notice. It might be a little bit after that.
Later, published, published notice.
Yeah, published notice.
Contents and mail notice. Published notice. Yeah, so here it is, yeah.
And it also wasn't totally clear that the city does the mail notice. It's clear who pays for it, that it's the applicant. But you might want to add that this, the city does that notice. It says that the director will ensure that it happens, but that's all. Thanks. Sorry if I'm monopolized.
No, this is great for me. I really appreciate the fight that you guys are digging into this. And just to close the loop on the mail notice part, this is where you were referring to, I think, does the city? Did you ask, does the city do the mail notice?
Right. It, it says who will pay for it. At the, the applicant is responsible for the cost, but it doesn't really say who does the notice. And I think that's how, I mean, for people that don't always do this process, it might be good for them to know that the city deals with that. They just have to pay for it. I mean, I would want to know that because that would freak me out if I had to deal with finding those addresses and whatnot, so.
Great, yeah. I've made note of that. I think these are all great clarifications. And again, we're trying to be more clear and oftentimes, you know, part of the desire of the council is to have our code be not as long or, you know, exhaustive, but oftentimes to get things to be clear, it takes more words to explain. And so I'm open to these changes for sure and want it to be clear, the less we have to ultimately end up explaining later, so. Commissioner. Yeah. Think Commissioner Cravilas.
Yes, yes, speaking of notices, I know that most land prof, land use professionals do look at the public notices and know where to look for them in the newspapers. And I know the newspapers themselves actually love public notices too. Because they're a great source of revenue to them. So of course it would be, it'd be in. So, um, of course, it would be, um, it'd be in keeping with Oregon, what is Atlanta use goal number one for citizen participation, to make the notices wider and in other areas. And I, I would support that as well. Um, keeping, uh, right up there with, uh, number five fourteen, uh, two, five point one four two B, um, discussing type three, uh, decisions and applications. That's a, a pretty interesting, um, part of the code where the hearings official, the, uh, county planning commission, the city council, the county commission and hearings officials all sometimes hear different uh, parts of some of our more complex like type four decisions and some of the type three decisions as well. I, and I've participated in a number of those, being one of the more senior, uh, uh, planning commissioners here with, uh, county planning commission, et cetera. I saw the comment by KK in the, uh, um, uh, margin on that. That's, uh, page 11 of 39, for those who are doing it that way, and it's five point one four two B. And I would really not support that type of change where, um, yeah, it's, it's the one right in the middle of the page there, where, um, some of the authority of the planning commission is removed from the planning commission and vested in a single, um, hired, uh, hearings official. In some of our more complex cases recently, the, uh, SUB, um, uh, power line and, um, uh, in, in substation in Glenwood. Frankly, I felt that the, uh, the hearings official missed quite a few things that were brought up by planning commissioners in, in those discussions. And the fact that the planning commission is a, is a large bu- uh, group of folks, all of us who have different, um, we have different points of view, we have different life experiences. We can look at, and the fact that these things are probably gonna be annexed anyway, if they're in the UGB or the, or the, um, urban fringe. To have a single person making that decision who's a, a hired person versus an appointed body of five, six people. I would really, even though it says, uh, that sometimes this involves procedural headaches. I think that government and decision-making sometimes involves procedural headaches, and I would definitely oppose that, uh, that note that is in the, uh, in the margin there. Thank you.
Great. I'm just making a note here. Yeah, thanks for the, um, comment. I, I'm sure you can appreciate the procedural challenges as you've been through those processes, and it does get complex and, um, but I appreciate your comment. It doesn't mean we have to do it. I think it is just a suggestion to try and, with the concept of streamlining and making it more user-friendly, um, for an applicant to try and understand the intricacies of complex processes and things. Just looking for opportunity to streamline, so, um, but definitely something to consider.
Yes, and I also feel it, um, it would be kind of going against the, uh, again, the, uh, public, um, participation. Because the fact that we are appointed by an elected body and, uh, um, hearings official is just a hire. That, uh, we are more responsible essentially to the community than I think than hearings official is.
Great. All very good, very good comments and suggestions. I really appreciate the detail. And again, it helps me see stuff that, you know, I've written all this and looked over it multiple times and had people comment. But again, the more sets of eyes on the stuff, the better in my mind, so. Um, so I can keep, again, I, I was just kind of scrolling down and going through this, jumping around works for me. I'm fine to do it that way. Um, I kind of lost the place of where I was. Again, I don't have to go through all this stuff in detail, so if there are other questions or other sections people wanna focus on, I'm happy to do that. Just doing a quick time check, we're at, uh, six twenty-five already, so we have about another half an hour. So I'll just keep going down through this procedures code section. Did I see another hand up?
Oh, yep, you got there right when I did. Commissioner Cravilas hand up.
Uh, yeah, just one other thing on, uh, five point one four, uh, three, five, posted notice of application. It's actually under five point one point four four oh, um, that, uh, talks about, um, now let's see, it is on the, on the one above, it's for the utility facility line. So five point one point four three five. I think that that notification along the, uh, route of the utility is a particularly valid, uh, and important way to inform the public. So I, I would, I would support that five point one four three five B. As opposed to again, the, the comment that said, where is this from? So I think that's a, that's a real good, um, part of the code myself.
Yeah, and I think Christina Kraus is just asking the question, because, you know, she has to assess the legalities of all of it, so. I think I stole this language, I wanna say from the city of Ben's code. So, um, you know, I, I'm not shy about talking about the idea that I didn't make up all this language myself. I'm borrowing from other jurisdictions. There are certain jurisdictions that have really good updated codes. So to the extent we can use stuff that we know works in other jurisdictions, um, sometimes that's what I've done. But so this would be new. It's not something we probably face or use very often, but it's the one time that, you know, I don't know, a utility company wants to send a new electric line through the back of a neighborhood, and people are really concerned about it, that this would come in handy to have in place for, um, rather than not having it and wishing we did kind of stuff. So trying to di- identify opportunities to have our code be more thorough to cover.
Yeah, yeah, I could also see that, like, in some of the, um, trunk line work that, uh, for sanitary sewer extensions and stuff that are thought of, that are out in rural areas. And people then know that, um, you know, there's gonna be a big construction project coming through here. So be aware of this, and this is who to contact if you have concerns or, you know, that type of thing. So that people, people aren't surprised by these larger, uh, linear projects.
Great. Yeah, so I'm gonna just scroll through here and see kind of, I've made some notes of different things to cover, and we've talked about a lot of them. Um, trying to see what else jumps out at me. You know, again, a lot of this is pretty dry. You guys have, um, caught on to some of the more intricate points, which is really good, some of the differentiation between the types. Also, the processes and procedures, the noticing stuff obviously does get pretty, um, detailed. Just the hearings process, again, a lot of these steps are pretty established in state law, so, um, a lot of this is pretty standard from jurisdiction to jurisdiction or statewide. There's some things that can, um, change depending on the city charter, you know, how we use a planning commission versus hearings officers and different things like that. So that's why some of that changes for the different types when it's in the UGB and the county may be involved. This process itself of adopting these code sections will be a joint process that this body will go through. Joint, um, we're still actually deciding whether the code sections themselves will be joint in front of the county planning commission and the city planning commission. There will be, because of some of the housing changes, um, there will be a co- at least one or a couple comprehensive plan changes that that comprehensive plan change must go through the joint planning commission and then ultimately joint elected officials process. But the code sections themselves could potentially bypass the county planning commission and just be a recommendation from the city planning commission to the joint elected officials. The board of county commissioners does have to co-adopt, but they don't have to get a co-recommendation, if that makes sense. Some of the reasoning that we're in discussions with the county right now, I'm getting off topic a little bit, but since we're talking about procedures, um, and in terms of some future next steps, but, um, some of it is the, the county planning commission is pretty buried right now in work, and their agenda is pretty full. And so we're trying to work with the county planning staff on, you know, prioritizing what does need to go through the planning commission and what maybe doesn't necessarily have to. So anyway, those conversations are ongoing. Um, there's a lot of things that we kind of do ad hoc today. And I'll just actually kind of mention one of them that came up recently. We, we don't often deem applications incomplete at the city. We, um, a lot jurisdictions do use incomplete applications pretty heavily. And it just hasn't really been a practice of ours. Our process is set up to be what we kind of call more front-loaded, where we really work with applicants on the front end to make sure once they do formally submit an application, that it's complete and it's as, you know, as close to approvable as possible kind of stuff. Other jurisdictions maybe do it differently, and so again, we don't often deem applications incomplete. It is a tool that can be used, and so we've, again, spelling out the rules and trying to really make it clear on, um, you know, especially when we get into our hearings process, whether you do a continuance or extensions and leaving the record open. Um, again, we've tried to really clean up and clarify when a lot of these, um, processes can or how they can be used. I'll just mention the type four process. We haven't really talked much about that. So the adoption of these code sections, using them as an example, with this process is a type four process. The, again, the type four being the most difficult, it is where there's a lot, large project that's not property-specific, that's going to affect a large part or the entire city. So those kinds of legislative decisions, sometimes it involves, talks about when, um, it may be even creating new policies. So I mentioned the comprehensive plan amendment that will go along with these code sections. So the, the council's original direction for this project was for this code update to remain, and I've talked about this before, but for it to remain policy-neutral. And when I say that, I mean comprehensive plan policy, the comprehensive plan is our 20-year planning document. With the implementation at the state level of House Bill 2001 for middle housing, specific to the housing code sections that we haven't really gone over yet in this format, but we will, is it's requiring us essentially to modify some of our existing comprehensive plan policies for housing. And one good example is kind of the density issue. So we have density ranges in our residential districts now. And, um, with the middle housing will basically be required to exceed those density ranges. So we're, and we've talked about this, I think, briefly, um, previously, and we'll do so more. But we're proposing, instead of doing a, a thorough update to our comprehensive plan policies to address House Bill 2001 changes at this point, is, and we've, um, worked with the state on this idea. But that is to just adopt what we're calling bridge language into the comprehensive plan to kind of bridge the gap between now and a short time in the future where we will address it more thoroughly. So, but just ad- uh, adopting that bridge language into our comprehensive plan to kind of recognize the change in housing policy, um, requires, you know, this, it's a broader policy change for the city. So that's kind of this type four processes when there's those larger policy changes. It's not implementing just existing policy, but, um, but it, this type four can include, like these, language talks about large-scale implementation of public policy. And it talks about including, but not limited to, um, land use regulations. So that's what this code update is. But this also talks about legislative matters involving the creation of or revision of public policy. So that's what that bridge language will be. So anyway, the type four process is this much bigger and broader type of land use process. These types of applications aren't typically an application where an individual property owner or something would apply for. Typically, the type four application is going to be, uh, maybe another public entity like Springfield Utility Board or Willamette Park and Rec District, possibly the school district. But it's where the, like, Willamette wants to adopt their, a new parks master plan. Um, so that would go through this type four adoption process, um, typically or something like that. So again, then there's a whole nother set of noticing requirements for this different type of type four process. Same thing with, uh, the hearing, the hearing process is slightly different than a type three, which is the, uh, quasi judicial process, where the type four is a more of a legislative process. There are some areas where, you know, these, this process for reconsideration is where we can kind of, if something, you know, it's like correction of a clerical error, or we need to, maybe a finding got written that doesn't quite work the way we had thought, and, and we relied on a piece of information, maybe that wasn't quite right. So this, these processes are spelled out in more detail to allow us to make sure decisions that were issued can be corrected without having to start from complete scratch. Um, I'm just gonna keep scrolling here. It looks like we're getting close to the end of this document. And, um, we might have a few minutes left. We could jump into, um, one of the zoning code sections itself. I was gonna start with the commercial zoning section. This talks about the appeals process, the remand process. This is something we don't have in our code currently. It's something that's not used very often. Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, is the state administrative court, basically, that hears appeals on matters that are beyond an appeal to our own city council. Somebody can appeal on to the state. And so this, then Luba can remand a, a decision, um, if it needs more work. This has happened recently on, uh, one, a sub Springfield Utility Board project where Luba remanded an appeal, and we didn't really have a process in place specifically in our procedures ordinance. So we kind of had to follow state law and then figure out how to locally implement those provisions. But so this will specify it more clearly for us. And then limitations of approval when they expire, how you, how an applicant acts on an approval. Time extensions, I'm just kinda, nothing's jumping out at me. A lot of this is pretty standard, as I've mentioned. Modification of approval, this is an area that again, we are kind of existing code lax in currently. We really don't have clear provisions for how to modify decisions or modify an application. So this specifies the difference between modifying a application before a decision versus modifying the decision or an application after a decision. You wanna actually modify the approval itself. So it really spells out the rules differently. A declaratory ruling is, um, a different type of decision altogether and, um, can be used to help inform other land use decisions. I'm not gonna go into the specifics of this process. But again, it's just another tool that's put in here to help us, um, make it easier for people to have paths to, you know, get to an end that's workable for them. A lot of this has historically kind of been made up on the fly and, um, just done internally by the city for the lack of rules, you know, just trying to make things work. So, but this, um, puts it, put the rules down on paper, like I said, so everybody knows the process for how to do changes and things along the way. I will ma- mention. I will ma- mention, um, development agreements. So development agreements currently we use pretty extensively, but the development agreements are a construct under state law as well. And this actually even references it right here or, or as Oregon revised statute, chapter 94. So, um, in a typical land use development, like somebody wants to build a new building, so it goes through a site plan approval to build that building. But as they build that building, they have to connect it to sewer and maybe improve the street or sidewalk and do some things. Um, so we condition that approval that they do all those improvements. Well, those conditions currently get, um, built into a development agreement that the city and the developer are agreeing to that this is the approval and these are the conditions. Well, that's really outside the scope of what state law envisions how a development agreement would work. So we're really with the adoption of this code, we're envisioning, envisioning moving away from these formal development agreements for every, um, land use application, similar to how we do it now, but using them really just confining the use of them to what they're in, um, anticipated to be used for under state law. And then I, I think it was, it was, the idea is that it would simplify the process considerably for the applicants and for the city. It's just less paperwork and, um, less process that isn't necessary under law. So again, looking for opportunities to streamline that process. While maintaining the protections that are needed for both the city and a developer, the protections are, um, would be in place. And at the end here is this table again, I've noted here in the table, I haven't gone through this table yet. As, um, I, we move towards finalizing this whole section. We'll revamp this table to make sure everything coincides. But this is kind of a little bit of a cheat sheet for people that you can say, well, what type of application am I doing? And then what type of process and what's the code section? So this is an example of an existing graphic we have that I think we can improve on and add other graphics for explaining the processes and showing visually, um, how processes go. And so with that, I'm gonna end this section unless there's more questions or comments. I'm happy to entertain those.
I don't see any hands, Mark.
Great. And I'm happy to, you know, again, you're all members of the public. We are doing public outreach right now. So if, um, folks, if members of the commission want to visit the project webpage and take the survey and provide feedback as members of the community, I'm open to that. And obviously you're entitled to do that. So there's other ways to provide comments and, um, I don't know about, you know, conflicts of commissioners also, you know, kind of testifying against what they're going to ultimately be hearing. But again, providing comments to me is fine if you think of things later as far as I'm concerned. I'm gonna just look for another section I had opened. I'm working on a pretty small screen here at my house this, tonight on a laptop. So if I'm squinting, that's what I'm squinting at. See if I can find the commercial zone section. I was gonna jump into the commercial zone section. Um, we have a few minutes, hopefully that we could, um, spend a few minutes starting. Maybe I'll just, that's industrial. For some reason, I'm not finding, I had opened it earlier. See if this is it, that's definitions again, we keep wanting to go back there. Well, let me just start with industrial if that's all right. Um, because we're a little getting short on time. But the one thing I want to kind of start with is, um, and I'm gonna try and make this a little bigger just for my own sake, but as well as you. The, um, one of the large areas, I think there's room for improvement on in these code, in the zoning sections themselves, is the category, categories of uses. And I'm scrolling down here to the use table itself. And industrial is a little bit more unique from some of the other zones. So we've, we've created these categories that these are talking about. So this is a waste-related uses or uses that are considered corporate and regional headquarters. Um, scrolling back up here, you know, warehouse and wholesale sales uses. And so what we've attempted to do is define these categories, what, what fits within industrial service? And what is considered light manufacturing? So previously the use tables for these zones, instead of having these categories, it, um, under this example section, all these different types of things that we're listing here in examples, we would have listed all these different things as separate uses within a use table itself. So we have this really detailed long list of uses that could be allowed in industrial zone, including, um, glass materials manufacturing and stone manufacturing. And, um, anyway, on and on these long lists. So instead of having that long detailed list, the idea is to just create these broad categories of uses. And then the use table below gets very simplified. So it's, again, th- there's still a number of lines here, having different types of uses. And some things are specifically called out like explosives or fireworks. That might otherwise fit under heavy or light manufacturing. But because that's dealt with differently, say, under the fire code and has different building code ramifications for where that type of use could be allowed, we've pulled it out from the broader category and specifically listed it. But for the most part, these broad categories are identifying where these uses are allowed. And as long as then, um, some new use that comes along that we maybe didn't anticipate fits within one of these categories based on the characteristics and examples identified above, then we can identify where it's allowed and what zones based on the category of use. So that's the idea. Um, industrial gets a little more tricky probably than the commercial. But, um, and again, there's specific things that we keep separate. The marijuana uses are all separate because there's very specific parameters, both under how the state allows us to, um, permit them and not, and also just the code provisions, um, dictating where they can be. So again, some of these things are still separate. But again, this, if you compared this use table to our existing use table, it's, um, you know, what, if this were all on one page, it would be one page where I don't have our existing code in front of me, but I'm sure it's multiple pages of a use table in our existing industrial zones today. So just as one kind of big formatting change of how we've proposed to revise the code, that's probably one of the biggies in at least the commercial industrial zones. So, you know, there could be, I think there's still opportunity to look at these categories of uses and, um, how they're defined, um, things that have exceptions to them, what aren't included in the categories and things like that, making sure that these are fine tuned to really work. Again, it's hard to envision everything. So in, in 10 years, if some new use comes along that we can't anticipate today, we want to make sure these categories are flexible enough to allow things that may come up in the future. This whole section here is an area that needs a little bit of work. And you could see in some of the notes and things, we worked with our technical advisor committee on this section. Um, got some good feedback. And really it's, it's trying to, this deals with how we are categorizing the uses within those broad use categories that I was just talking about. So, um, a determination of a use category versus, um, determination of a similar use. So again, there's some repetition here and opportunity to clean this language up. The intent really is to have what's a clear and objective way. So kind of back to the procedures part about a type one process, that there's no discretion used in deciding where a use fits. So if somebody comes in and wants to build, I don't know, um, build cars, well, we know that cars can be manufactured in the heavy industrial zone because it's clear that it fits in the heavy manufacturing category. But if, um, and so having a clear and objective way to do that versus if something can't be clearly and objectively determined to fit in a use or not. You know, and I'll just pick kind of a one that we dealt with a year or two ago. And so there's, I don't know how many of you may be familiar with a, familiar with a product that's manufactured in the region. It's Tannerite, it's like an exploding target for people to shoot with a gun and it blows up. Well, they approached the city and asked if they could, you know, occupy a warehouse in the city to manufacture this stuff. And it's really not an explosive by itself. So we were trying to figure out, well, you know, working with the fire marshal and different things. It's like, what i- is clearly manufacturing, but what type of manufacturing? And so if we have to use discretion to decide, well, what, what type of use is that? And where does it fit? So the second, the second part of this section, the determination of similar is where we would use discretion. And so that decision, even in just determining what category it might fit in, could be an appealable land use decision that somebody might want to challenge the city. So again, sticking with Tanner, I just, because it popped into my head was, um, they might not like the determination we made saying, well, you're similar to an explosive. So you can only be limited to these certain zones or you're not allowed. And so, um, they could say, well, we don't like your decision. We want to appeal that to say the city council and make, have them make the decision. So anyway, um, that was the intent behind these two different sections, even though they seem pretty similar. And just trying to split hairs sometimes to figure out the difference between these two sections is again, why it's still highlighted and something we're still working on. So, um, we're getting close to the end of the time. Um, I don't know if the commission's gonna want a short break beforehand, but I think I had a good stopping point. I could leave it here if there's any last questions or we can jump into this section at the next work, work session, kind of start where we left off. But I'll see if there's any comments or questions generally and we can go from there.
Commissioner Bergen, did you have a question?
No, I didn't. I was just coming back.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mark? It's a lot to take in and digest.
Yeah.
Thanks for a great presentation, Mark. Always appreciated. Very nice presentation. It's good.
I appreciate your time and thanks for engaging with some, what some might think is a pretty dry topic of, of language and stuff. So, and again, happy to revisit any of this stuff later as we continue working through these code sections later in the summer as we move through the process, so.
Great. Thank you, Mark. And, um, I think if you think this is dry, you're talking to the wrong group because we all love this stuff. So I hope we're a good audience for you. Um, anything to add before I adjourn the work session and give us a little bit of a break for the regular meeting? Okay, hearing none, I adjourned this work session. We will be back in seven minutes, um, at 7:00 PM to kick off our regular meeting. The Zoom link will not change. So if you tuned in for that, uh, you've reached the right place. I'll see you all at seven. Thank you, Brenda. I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. And it looks like all of the commissioners from the work session are here. So we don't need to repeat the roll call. Um, can we begin with the pledge of allegiance? And Commissioner Buck, for the pledge of allegiance, um, since we're doing it over Zoom, usually everybody stays muted and then I'll recite it, um, and we all look at the flag that's being shared. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Brenda.
Yep.
I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There is one time designated for public testimony this evening. Business from the audience, which, oh, sorry, there are two times designated for public testimony this evening. The first is business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the planning commission on any subject that is not, um, the discretionary use in site plan review application for Pierce Park that is on the agenda tonight. If you are joining us online and wish to speak, please use the chat window. Please send a comment to the host with your name, mailing address, and the subject you would like to speak about. You can select the host only at the bottom of the chat window. Please do not use the chat feature for any other purpose during the meeting. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. For people calling in by phone, we will announce a time for those on the phone to speak. If you do not wish to speak, just state that you do not want to speak. Our next item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Do I hear any adjustments to tonight's agenda? And that agenda is being screen shared right now.
I have not received any notice of, uh, changes needed.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, hearing none, we will now move on to business from the audience. Brenda, is there anyone who has submitted a chat comment for business from the audience?
Um, no, no comments in, um, our chat or on Springfield, Oregon speaks.
Great, thank you. And is there anyone on the phone?
No.
Thank you.
No one.
Our next item is approval of minutes from the July 7th, 2021 meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Or do you have a motion to approve the minutes as published in the agenda packet?
I have a correction, I believe.
Go ahead, Commissioner Quibla.
Um, I believe under conflict of interest that there's a mistake under Commissioner Bergen's declaration.
I noticed that as well, Commissioner, um, Quibla says, uh, Commissioner Bergen works for a developer and I believe it should say it works for, um, she's a residential real estate, realtor is the word. Does that line up, Commissioner Bergen?
I will make that correction.
Great, thank you, Brenda. Are there any other corrections or a motion to approve with corrections? And Commissioner Buck, um, you are free to abstain from this if you would like to, but you can vote however you'd like. I'll go ahead and move to approve the minutes from the July 7th meeting with the corrections that Commissioner Quibla pointed out.
I'll second.
All right, moved by myself, the chair, seconded by Commissioner Salazar. Brenda, can you have a roll call, vote, roll call vote, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner McGinley.
Hi.
Commissioner Landon.
Hi.
Commissioner Coigula.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Abstain, I was not present at that meeting.
Commissioner Bergen.
Hi.
Commissioner Salazar.
Hi.
Commissioner Buck.
I will also abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Motion carries with two abstentions. Okay. This next agenda item is a time for the public hearing regarding site plan review and discretionary use approval for Pierce Park located north of the E-Wed pathway and identified as assessor's map 17 dash 02 dash 19 dash 33, talk slot 1500. And the journal number is 811 dash 21 dash 000142 dash TYP2 and 811 dash 21 dash 000143 dash TYP3. And I will hand it over to the city attorney to read the quasi judicial statement of legal rights.
Uh, good evening, Commissioner McGinley, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. Okay, uh, I'm Mary Bridget Smith, I'm the city attorney. And since this is a quasi judicial hearing tonight, there are, is a statement of legal rights that needs to be read into the record. And I'll go ahead and take a few minutes. And I'll go ahead and take a few minutes to do that now. So starting with the role of the planning commission is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about land use matters in Springfield. In making those decisions, the commission must apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed and cannot vary or change from that law. Members of the planning commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, planning commission members will state whether they have any conflicts of interest, such as a family or financial or business relationship with any of the applicants or in connection with the land that is the subject site tonight. If such a potential conflict of interest exists, the commissioner will state whether he or she is without actual bias and whether he or she would like to step down from the planning commission during the hearing for this matter. Planning commissioners will also state whether they have discussed the application in question with any parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as a visit to the site in question. And if any planning commissioners have had such contacts, those should be disclosed and the substance of those contacts as well. If a planning commissioner has independent knowledge of relevant facts, the planning commissioner then will summarize those facts. During the time for public testimony, a witness may challenge the impartiality of a planning commissioner and may rebut the substance of those independent facts in the planning commissioner's knowledge of them. And then the commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge at that time. A copy of the procedures and agenda for today's hearing and copies of the staff reports have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. To preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council and ultimately to the Land Use Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the planning commission closes the public record, which will be later. If you want the planning commission to consider your testimony, you must testify before the planning commission closes the record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it. Or else you may not be able to raise that issue on appeal with the Land Use Board of Appeals. For the applicant, any concerns must be raised about conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission to respond and to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the planning commission, you can ask the commission to hold the record open or to continue the hearing. Must make that request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the planning commission holds the record open, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record. If the planning commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any other reason, state law provides that it must be held open for at least seven days after it's closed to all parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of an application unless the applicant waives that right. Please make sure that your testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria for discretionary use application is provided in Springfield Development Code and that's in section 5.9-120. The criteria for tentative site plan approval is Development Code 5.17-125. The criteria are described in more detail in the staff report and posted on Springfield, Oregon Speaks and will be summarized by staff in the presentation. And demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from the phone or online that are out of turn will not be made part of the record. Those joining the meeting online who wish to testify may send a message, excuse me, send a message to the host stating your name, address, and then whether you support, oppose, or neutral with regard to the application. During the public hearing, the host will ask those joining by telephone if they wish to testify. Please begin your testimony by giving your name and mailing address. If you represent someone, please say so. If you have any exhibits you'd like the commission to consider, such as a copy of your testimony or photographs or other documents, please email those to the planner who's Melissa Corino. Her email address is mcorino@springfield-orang.gov before the written record is closed. Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contact or independent knowledge of relevant facts. And I just say I haven't done this in a long time. So if Sandy or Melissa have anything to add, please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Mary Bridget. So now we'll go around and declare any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts or independent knowledge. I will begin, I virtually visited the site via Google Maps and the street view. I will go over to Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you, Chair. No potential conflicts of interest and no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. I assure Landon.
No conflicts of interest, no ex parte contacts.
Thank you, Commissioner Quaidla.
No ex party contacts, no independent knowledge and no conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergen.
I have no potential conflicts of interest and no ex parte contact.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill.
Um, I have no potential, no conflicts of interest and no ex parte contact.
Thank you.
Or independent knowledge.
Thank you. And Commissioner Buck.
I don't believe I have any potential conflicts of interest. I sat with the ex parte contact. I was a member of the Willam Lane Budget Committee for this particular year. I don't remember this being discussed at that time. It is possible, but so I wanted to declare that.
Thank you, everyone. Um, and now I wanted to see if there were any challenges from the audience to the impartiality of the planning commission.
Okay. I don't see any in the chat.
Thank you, Brenda. And now I will hand it over to Melissa Corino to present the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Could I also share my screen?
Yes, Brenda, can you promote Melissa to a host? Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Good evening, commissioners. It's been a while. I think it's been actually a whole year, more than a year since I last presented here. But it's great to see you all. It's good to see old faces and new faces. Again, my name is Melissa Corino. I am a senior planner in current development. And tonight's request is for the planning commission to review a proposed site plan and discretionary use application for a new Willamette Lane neighborhood park called Pierce Park. The subject site is comprised of two different tax lots adjacent to each other, as you can see highlighted in yellow. The subject site is located south of Briggs Middle School, north of the E web pathway, west of 31st Street and east of the end of Otto Street. Pierce Park will also serve new residents of the Markola Meadows Development to the south of the E web pathway. And here's another view of the subject site that was provided by Willamette Lane Park and recreational district. And here's a detailed site plan of Pierce Park, a neighborhood park with kids, a kid's bicycle playground. And a copy is provided in the staff report for your, if you want to take a closer look as well. As mentioned before, there are two different applications the commission is considering this evening with different sets of criteria from the Springfield Development Code. The first one being the site plan review criteria, which is in the Development Code Section 5.17-125, which is a type two application. The findings and then conditions of approval from the Development Review Committee are included in the staff report. And then the other application is a discretionary use criteria, which is listed in the Development Code Section 5.9-120. This is a type three application, hence why we are here with the planning commission. Findings and one condition of approval are included in the staff report. The site plan review application, I should say, applies to both parcels, but the discretionary use application only applies to the eastern parcel. So I'll go into that further into detail. So sorry for bouncing around. Again, let's go to the western parcel. The western parcel is zoned public land and open space, PLO. And these, this type of zoning district allows government uses, educational uses, and parks and open space uses. Obviously, the parks and open space use would apply here. Here is the proposed site plan for the western parcel of Pierce Park, which includes walking paths, age appropriate play areas, a central meeting space with a picnic shelter, drinking fountains, and a basketball court. And here are some photos of neighborhood park features of other Willamette Lane parks, which can serve as a model for the new features proposed at Pierce Park. Now, the eastern parcel is actually zoned medium density residential. So we have two different types of zoning with each parcel. Discretionary use approval, I'm sorry. So this is medium density residential, which establishes sites for residential development, mostly multifamily dwellings in a range of 14 to 28 dwelling units per net acre and also provides for a limited range of just of neighborhood uses. Unfortunately, neighborhood parks is not a permitted use in the MDR zoning district. Neighborhood parks are listed as a land use that requires both discretionary use and site plan review approvals. Also, with this, specific development standards must be met for public or private parks, which is listed in Section 4.7-200B in the Springfield Development Code. Here is the proposed site plan for the eastern parcel of Pierce Park, which includes a gravel walking path and a kid's bicycle playground, which you can see is these little tracks. Here are some photos that can give you a taste of the featured off features offered in a kid's bicycle playground. All right. And then I just wanted to go back to the application criteria. So site plan review criteria is listed again in the Development Code. Staff held a development review committee meeting and findings number 13 through 79 in the staff report incorporate the committee's comments as well as the, as well as addressing the criteria of approval. And to be a fully compliant site plan, we include six conditions of approval that must be met prior to final site plan sign off. This application also meets the discretionary use criteria listed in, again, Section 5.9-120 of the Development Code. Findings number one through seven in the staff report address the provisions of the metro plan, specifically policies H2 and H5. And then findings eight through 12 address the applicable specific development standards. And there's one condition of approval that must be met for final site plan sign off. Because Willamette Lane has met all the required criteria for Pierce Park with the listed conditions of approval, staff recommend the commission approve both the site plan and discretionary use applications. Both myself and the applicant are in attendance for any additional comments or any questions you may have. And I think that's the applicant with his cat. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Melissa. I will, I see a hand raised from Commissioner Quaidla.
Yes, couple of questions for staff. First of all, I did note that emergency access for any people who might be hurt at the park or so would probably be best through the E web path, which I'm sure is pretty robust, being there for maintenance of their huge water lines that run through there. But are the pathways within the park, I noticed that there's a lot of light concrete. And I know that the fire department oftentimes will run fairly heavy vehicles out to work on someone if they've been injured at a park or something. For instance, the city of Eugene requires almost all their multi-use pads to be extremely robust to actually support like a very heavy fire truck. So it has a fire department looked at this. And then my second question would be, I noticed that the discussion of parking of vehicles for access to the park was, it wasn't a real of big discussion in regard to that. And prob said that probably most folks would be biking or walking to it. But is there any resolution or any check back with neighborhoods being that these are cul-de-sacs that are closest to this? Will there be any check back with the folks for any resolution regarding excessive use of parking by park visitors? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and great questions, Commissioner. I'm going to take a stab at those questions. And then we also have Michael Liebler, our transportation engineer, if he wants to chime in as well. Regarding fire access, the applicant actually received fire code modifications so that those, those concrete or the the paths do not have to carry the weight of a fire safety apparatus, mostly because there are no buildings on site except for the picnic shelter, which is made out of metal. And the fire code modification was approved by the Fire Marshal's Office. Regarding parking, a question about the Otto Street cul-de-sac, I know that that was a concern at one point, but specifically from our development code, this application and proposal did not trigger any requirements for parking, especially since there are no restrooms proposed in this bill, in this application. I'm going to let Michael Liebler chime in as well.
Thank you. Hello, come. Oh, hello. Can you guys hear me? Good. I'm Michael Liebler. I'm the city's transportation planning engineer. We did have discussions with Willamette concerning parking and I know they did perform some initial public outreach. This is very much a neighborhood park. We have several neighborhood parks throughout the city. Many of them have no, no parking. They're really meant to serve the, the public just in the surrounding area. The addition of the extra bicycle playground is a limited kind of less auto centric use. And in talking with Willamette Lane, they did a very good job of taking a look at other comparison sites throughout the United States. I think they had a couple different comparison sites that they cited in their narrative, showing that those sites also had characteristics like they're proposing here and then limited parking. If no parking, I, I believe they could, they could speak to that condition in their narrative. But in our discussions, we were cognizant of the parking. There is some on-street parking. I think any parking that would be attracted to this neighborhood park would be very limited in nature and most likely easily absorbed by the, the surrounding street infrastructure and available parking. As such, Willamette Lane has also, through their narrative, expressed how they are not looking towards having any programmatic activities out here. They're not inviting large groups. You know, the picnic shelter is a very limited shelter. And as Melissa alluded to, they're not putting any other additional structures such as bathroom facilities or other things that would attract more of the traffic or parking needs you would see of a more expansive, what I would call a public park as opposed to a neighborhood park as you would go by the ITE definitions for looking at trip generation for parks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Salazar.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I did notice I wanted to ask about, I know there a traffic study wasn't necessarily done for this application, but I did notice in the application materials that Willamette Lane noted that this type of use, this type of bicycle path area doesn't exist currently in any Willamette Lane park. So I would imagine that there would because this would be the only such path in in our area that it would attract some folks from outside the neighborhood to specifically use this path because it's the only one I want to know. Note that could generate trips and also generate traffic and parking needs.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Salazar. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but I wanted to give Simon Dawes from Willamalene some time to just add his comments about the project as well.
Melissa, this is Mary Bridgette, and I'm, I apologize for, I just wanted to interrupt procedurally and, and confirm with the Planning Commission that the public hearing is open. And if you want to move forward with testimony and then handle specific questions, or that's generally how I've seen it done, but if you normally do it on the front end, but just wanted to offer that up, that some of these questions may get answered in the testimony and the presentation.
Thanks, Mary Bridgette. Simon, did you want to add anything before hearing questions? Do you have anything to add beforehand?
Not, not in any great detail, I think you did a good kind of summation of, of the project in general. So any correct, I may, wouldn't possibly make one correction. You showed a slide earlier talking about the proposals for the Eastern parcel. But yeah, those images there, those images are probably more suited for the, we have a very small bike playground, which is adjacent to the traditional playground. But I don't know if you have a slide of the, this, it's more of a skills course on that eastern side, but the, the timber, timber kind of, you know, ramps and bridges, things like that is what you would see on the eastern side. So it's something that we believe is designed to a level to attract, you know, kind of kids. Well, the images you're seeing there, that would probably be for pretty little kids, like you're seeing in those photographs for the, the skills course on the eastern side, maybe a little bit older, maybe up to early to mid-teens. But so nobody that's going to be dry, is going to be attracted there, that's going to be driving a car, I don't think. Obviously, there may be some kids that beg a parent or guardian or whatever, to kind of drive in there from elsewhere within Springfield. But we really thought this was a great opportunity, being, you know, a park that's next to the E-Web multi-use pathway already, it's a really great opportunity for kids to exercise some independence and get to the park on their own. You know, particularly kids, you know, kind of early teens, which is an age bracket that often, you know, cities or park and rec districts get criticized for for not providing enough for that age group. Maybe just open play space, basketball courts and so on. But otherwise, the typical playgrounds that we have, those are designed for kids up to twelve. But after that, it's often, you know, quite difficult for kids, a little bit older than that, to find somewhere to, to do something they want to do. So with the E-Web path in that location, we thought it was a perfect location for this bike playground skills course there. Otherwise, the rest of the, the park is fairly standard in terms of the components that are provided, you know, concrete pathways, kids' player, play areas for the two to five age group and five to twelve age group, benches, trash cans, bike racks, all that kind of stuff. Obviously, we're proposing quite a bit of tree planting there as well. Majority of the site will not actually be developed specifically, about, only about two acres of the six, ninety-six acres will actually receive some kind of treatment and irrigation. So about two-thirds of the park will kind of stay almost in its existing state with no improved, no manicured lawn, for example, and no irrigation. So but yeah, other than that, I think you did a pretty good summation of the project. I'm happy to answer any specific questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Simon, and thank you, Melissa. The next, next up in our queue is testimony. And so this goes in a specific order. First, I will call participants in favor, and then I will call participants neither in favor nor opposed. And lastly, I'll call participants opposed to the application. When I call on you, please state your name and mailing address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. And so first up is testimony in favor. Are there any participants of the Zoom call who would like to speak in favor of the application? Brenda, did you see anything in the chat or in favor?
I have one comment in the chat from Lori, but I don't know if she's in favor or against or neutral.
We're neutral right now.
Okay. Okay, great. We will then move on to neither in favor nor opposed, so neutral. So Lori, would you like to speak here?
Yeah, we have the property two nine nine one Yolanda is where we were located. So you, I don't know how to point it out.
It's got the, the, you can see the two boxes, which would be the house and our shop. It's almost right in the middle of the eastern part.
So, yeah, it's like three properties over to the right from Briggs. So that's our house right on the path, eastern pathway.
So we have, you know, the concerns is in, in the plans, we see that there's plans to, you, you mentioned specifically that you're leaving the trees and grass. But along that fence line is an existing blackberry fence that goes virtually the entire length of our property, east to west. And it provides a lot of security and privacy. And so we've been told that there's no plans to remove it, but it's not mentioned in the, in the plans specifically to leave it. And so we're concerned that if something changes, that we would miss, have missed the opportunity to voice our opposition to that. And also I have a question about for the, the, what's it called, the pump track or the bike track? That, is that going to be lit at night, since most of these parks close at ten? Are lights going to be on there all night? Or any at all?
Thank you, Lori, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name, the second person. Rick. Rick, thank you, Lori and Rick, for your testimony. Let's stop my timer. Are there any other folks who would like to provide testimony neither in favor nor against?
Chair, could I get the, their last name so we can get them on a mailing list?
Lewis, L E W I S.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, and now we will have time for testimony opposed to the application. Are there any folks on this Zoom call would like to find testimony in opposition?
I have not received any more comments in the, in the, any comments in the comment section.
Thank you, Brenda. And now I would, I'll ask if there's anybody on the phone would like to speak. The last time I looked at the participants, I do not see that, though. Brenda, just double checking that you also don't see anybody on the phone.
I do not see anyone on the phone.
Okay, thank you. And now I will hand it over to Melissa to provide the staff response to the testimony.
Sure thing, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lewis, for bringing those questions up. I'm going to defer to Simon as the project planner or landscape architect for the park, specifically about the blackberry fence. But my understanding is the bike playground is not going to be lit at night.
Yeah, that's correct. No lighting at all on that eastern parcel. On the western parcel, we will have two kind of streetlights, pedestrian, well, yeah, streetlights about fourteen feet high, I think they are. One will be next to the picnic shelter, and the other one will be kind of just south of there, closer to the actual E-Web path. Those, those are more kind of just from a security standpoint for the main part of the park there, just, just so that, you know, if somebody reports an issue going on, at least a police vehicle could drive by and be able to see into that central part of the, the playground. But no lights in the eastern parcel at all. And the vegetation on the eastern parcel on, on the north boundary between the park and the private residences will, will not be touched at all. There's no proposals to do anything with the blackberries or any of the trees there right now. Typically, with, with Willamalene, we do, we do like to remove blackberries because it's very invasive. But we've been aware from early stage, you know, during the public open house we had last September, October time, that there was definitely a concern there from the neighboring residents about security and so on. So we are more than happy in this location to keep the blackberry bushes. And I know people like to go picking blackberries along there too, so we don't want to deprive people of that either. Just, just to add a bit more information, because people may see it taking place, and I don't want, don't want them to get worried. But on the, the, the north boundary between the park and the school, Briggs Middle School, we will be removing some invasive vegetation there for two reasons. Partly because, as I said, we do like to manage invasive vegetation, but also because the, the, the current fence between the two properties is not on the property line. It's, it's four feet off the property line, and the school district would like it to be on the property line, which means us removing some of the vegetation along the property line only on that western parcels and only between the Willamalene property and the school district property. So there may need to be a few small trees be removed, but mostly just the understory vegetation, including the blackberry, so.
Thank you, Simon and Melissa. Oh, Michael Ackerson, I see your hand is up. Are you a part of the applicant team? Looks like you're muted.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Yes, I live on Auto Street. I'm three houses from the cul-de-sac. And I start my day at five in the morning and my office. Excuse me?
We need to follow the order of the Planning Commission testimony and procedures. And so, Michael, you hadn't signed up to speak, nor have Terrence Bohm. So I'd like to work with Chair McGinley on the procedures part of this hearing, since neither of you had signed up to speak and were past the point where you can.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just a big deal for me, living here.
So Commissioner McGinley, I think we can, you haven't closed the hearing yet, so I think the Planning Commission can decide, except additional testimony. It's to be a decision of the commission to be able to back, and then you'll need to allow applicants, again, I re, to kind of go back and have the applicant and staff respond to any testimony if you do it, decide to allow the additional testimony.
We also had someone join in late at seven thirty-nine and left a comment. I haven't read through it yet, I just saw it pop up. It's a Terrence Bohm.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you, Brenda. And to everyone listening tonight, I know this process is already legal and confusing. And then having it be on Zoom makes it even more confusing. So I apologize for how this process has played out. And I do want to ensure that we can hear from everybody. The Planning Commission does not have to make a decision tonight. Sandy said, I heard Sandy cut out a little bit, so I just wanted to reiterate what she said. We can extend the time that we can hear from everybody. But we do have to follow the order of the agenda tonight. That was the agenda for tonight. So the opportunity for testimony tonight has ended, and it will be up to the commission on whether to extend the opportunity so that we can hear more testimony, be it written or orally, or at a potential future meeting after this. So again, I apologize. And we'll, we'll take it to the commission to talk about whether to extend. Sandy, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, just to clarify, you can take additional testimony tonight, but I think the commission needs to agree to that, that you kind of go back and go through that process again, if you want to do that.
Okay, um, could we, could I get a show of hands? Maybe have the commissioners pop their video up to go back through the, the testimony process? Do I have any commissioners in opposition to that?
Want me to roll call?
Roll call, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner McGinley.
I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm in support of going back through the testimony process.
Okay, Commissioner Landon.
Same as Commissioner McKinley, McGinley, sorry.
Commissioner Quaidula.
I may be in the minority here, but I think that the, the, the public could be just as easily served by us extending the record and allowing them more time to reflect on what they want to say, and then providing testimony to staff. We can come back again and make our decision in a couple of weeks. And I think that that's a way to keep on the process and also provide them plenty of room for input. But like I said, maybe in the minority.
Commissioner Bergen.
I am in support of additional testimony tonight.
Commissioner Salazar.
I'm in support of hearing additional testimony tonight. We have some folks who joined, and I'd hate to keep them out, because they were later on a technicality. We want to hear neighborhood voices and can continue to hear neighborhood voices by keeping the record open after this meeting as well.
So you support hearing them tonight and extending the record?
Yes, but we can get to the extension of the record at a later point.
Commissioner Buck.
I am in support of hearing additional testimony from those who, who are here tonight. Zoom is, is difficult, and I, I want to honor that. And I'd also like to leave the option open after hearing their concerns to extend as, as well.
Commissioner Gill.
I'm in support of hearing the testimony tonight.
Thank you. You have a one, two, three, four, three vote.
Thank you, Brenda. So we will go back and do this over, and I'll explain it again. We do have to do it in a specific order. So how it will work is first I will call testimony that's in favor of the application, and then I will call testimony that's neither in favor nor opposed. And then I will call testimony opposed to the application. And when you speak, please state your name and mailing address. And please keep your comments to three minutes. And so I will start off with anybody who is in support of the application. Please, in the chat, write your name and mailing address, and whether you are in favor. Not seeing anything in the chat there, but I'll give it a second.
Um, Lori, Lori, Mr. and Mrs. Lewis do not need to testify again unless they have something more to add, I would add.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda. And then the next one is folks who are neither in favor nor opposed.
I have a Terrence, again, Bohm in the chat. Does he want to testify as neutral or against?
Hello?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I came in late and I apologize for that, that had some of the same concerns as the Lewis's. We're building a new house just to the east of them, and we've cleaned up all the back, and so it's pretty open from our side. So our main concern was some of the same things the Lewis has brought up, lighting, privacy, security, noise, traffic late at night. Are there any plans, and again, I apologize if I missed this earlier, landscaping to help provide some of that privacy again and screening on the park side of things?
Before we go forward with the response, could I get your address, please?
Sure, three zero six five Yolanda Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Terrence, did you have anything further to say, or were you finished?
No, that was my main question, was what the plan was for, to help us neighbors that have to put up with maybe, and I don't even know if it's going to be an issue, but our main concern is this pump track and kids out there late at night, noise, security, vandalism, still, like I said, we late at night, noise, security, vandalism stuff. Like I said, we did, we cleaned everything up. But now it's, we feel pretty exposed to what may be coming, not only with the new subdivision, but now this park and bike track.
Thank you, Terrence, for your comment. Now we will, or is there any, is there anybody else who would like to testify neither in favor nor opposed?
Can I ask, Mr. Ackerson, you have your hand up. Are you wanting to testify?
Yes, I do. I would like to.
In favor, neutral or against?
Well, neutral. Basically, I live on Otto Street. Three houses from the cul-de-sac or I'm right at the cul-de-sac. And although all of the neighbors here have an issue with who's going to park there and there will be people parking there. And I see people go down the middle of my street, walking dogs and their kids and bikes all, all, all day long because I work out of my house. And the big issue here is fire trucks, garbage trucks, UPS, they cannot turn around in that cul-de-sac. Cars are parked there. It'll be impossible for an emergency vehicle to be able to turn around or help anybody. And that's really a big issue here because it will cause a huge problem.
Can I please get your address since you didn't write in the chat your name or address?
Yeah, two four four six Otto Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Okay, thank you, everybody for providing your testimony tonight and for your flexibility and understanding as we work through this process virtually. Now I will hand it over to staff, Melissa Carino, to provide a response to the testimony and answer some of your questions.
Thank you. So I appreciate the added comments and testimony and I think your concerns are very valid. I will defer to both Simon and Michael Liebler to answer more specific questions about the screening and traffic and parking. But I did just want to add that I don't know if Terry heard us earlier, the lighting, there will be no lighting at the bike, the pump track at night. So that will hopefully deter any use or any people going there. On the western parcel where kind of the, the play areas and the picnic shelter and the playground is, there will be some street lights there to help provide security, especially if any emergency vehicles can go by or, you know, safety vehicles can go by and just look in and see if anything's happening. Leave, that's what I could answer now. Simon, would you like to answer the screening question?
Sure, yeah. I don't know if Terrence lives, if you're looking at the, the plan there, Terrence, if your property is the, the one that kind of shows no vegetation between the park and the adjacent, adjacent parcel. There's, is it the one where there's an existing white fence potentially? If it is that one, then I think there probably was some vegetation there previously, which I think was probably removed by a developer, whoever, whoever built that white fence. If we're talking about the same parcel. So if there was blackberries there before, I'm guessing they're probably gonna, they're probably already springing back up already, I think. That they're pretty tenacious. So they're probably going to come up. At the moment, we don't have any proposals to provide any additional screening along there. I mean, there is already a six foot high white vinyl fence. We'd be more than happy to plant some native trees along that edge as well. Again, we probably want to take a look at it and see if anything has already seeded itself or is, is starting to return anyway. That may well be the case. But we're definitely happy to look at screening in that location with regard to noise and so on. I think, I think the kids, the way kids will use the, the bike skills course there, obviously they will be, you know, it's one person on a bike going around the course and over the ramps and so on. So you're not going to get a large group of kids in one place at any one time. I wouldn't imagine where they will congregate. I believe will be at the far western edge of the, kind of the bike course. We have a little concrete area there with a couple of bike racks and a, and a bench. So that is intended to be kind of like the, the takeoff point, the gathering point. So I think you'll probably find kids kind of starting and ending there and probably not, probably not hanging out on the eastern edge of the, the bike playground. But otherwise, you know, you're, you're probably going to hear more than you do right now would be, would be my guess. But a rubber tire on gravel trail or on the wooden kind of boardwalk structures hopefully will be relatively, relatively quiet. Addressing parking in, in Otto Street. Yeah, I, I know I've kind of, I've met Michael before and we've spoken on the public meeting before as well. So we know that parking there right now is a bit of an issue in terms of turnaround in the end of the cul-de-sac there for any kind of vehicle. For what it's worth, you know, I think there's two parking spaces there right now at the far end of Otto Street. The, you could probably park the rest of it. You're probably excluding parking naturally just with driveways and so on. I could be wrong on that, but I mean, we would be okay if the city decided that they wanted to put no parking signs or something at the end there just to allow that, that turnaround to be allowed, I guess. It seems like it's, you know, it's difficult right now, but we'd be okay with excluding parking from those couple of spaces at the far end of Otto Street. We're going to make the park more visible as well because that's one, one way of the, the main entry is from Otto Street in that location to.
Thanks, Simon. And it looks like Michael's about to speak up as well.
I, we can definitely take a look from a cursory review, curb to curb. It looks like the, the cul-de-sac was designed per our, our standard for, for building cul-de-sacs as a, as a dead end can, condition. We can obviously check with the, the fire department and check the radiuses and check the turning abilities within, within the cul-de-sac. And if, if needed, put in appropriate signage to restrict parking if, if that is a concern. And yeah, but what I do see here is that it, it looks like it's the standard radius of seventy foot curb to curb. And just need to check with fire to make sure that that's per their standard for a turnaround and, and sign appropriately.
Do, do you mean radius or diameter, Michael?
Uh, diameter. Good, good catch.
Okay. And next up is rebuttal from the applicant.
I guess I don't, is this, sorry, is this rebuttals to the, the public comment?
Yes.
No, I don't, I, I wouldn't necessarily have any rebuttal. Like hopefully I kind of explained that, that position with the comments that have been made.
Great, thank you. Now it is time for the commission to pose any possible questions to the applicant staff or people who testified. Commissioners may turn on their cameras or raise their hand indicating a desire to speak. I could also just go through and call everybody one by one, but let's start with the hands raised. I will go with Commissioner Quivela, followed by Commissioner Buck.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Question for the applicant. It's my understanding that the, I believe the school is going to move into a new school location at within the subdivision to the south. Is that true? And if so, will the park, is the park in a being designed with that moving of the school in mind?
I'm not sure if that's, that might be a question, but addressed to the school district. But in our talks with them, yeah, I, I can probably informally say I have heard that the school district is maybe acquiring some property in, in the Marko Lometa subdivision. Offhand, I don't know if it's an elementary school or a middle school or anything like that. So I think that's probably further in the future and it's not something that they haven't expressed any more detail than, than that to us at this point. We have spoken with them at length about just the park as it relates to Briggs Middle School right now. And obviously making pedestrian connections and kind of improving the boundary between Pierce Park and the existing Briggs Middle School property as well. But we haven't necessarily spoken directly about connection of the park with the potential future school. I'm not exactly sure where that would be within the development anyway at this point. So. Okay.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just curious if you could speak to any potential concerns with, you know, separating the park from the school property. I'm sure that's been addressed, but it seems like the intention is to, is to keep those properties separate. There'd be no access points. And, and any security issues have been, been taken into consideration with that separation. Can you just speak to that?
Sure, there will, there will be a new pedestrian, formalized kind of pedestrian connection between the park and Briggs Middle School, a five foot wide concrete pathway. With regard to security, at the moment, there's, you know, just the blackberries and, and an old four foot high post and wire fence on that boundary. But the idea is to, as I said, remove most of the understory vegetation, which is predominantly invasive anyway. Said the fence line is not on the property line. I think there's interest for both parties, particularly the school district, to have that new fence on the, the property line and for it to be something more secure. They could probably be a six foot high chain link fence. And then where the, the pathway connection is, there will be a gate there which will be on a, on a which will be locked on a timer. I believe the school district has these other properties. I think there's one, there's another location at Guy Lee School where the playground at Guy Lee Elementary kind of classifies as, or counts as the, as a playground for Guy, for Guy Lee Park as well, but it's only accessible from the park grounds to the school grounds outside of school hours. I believe that gate is on, on a similar timer. So I'd be looking to install something very similar. Otherwise, yeah, the vegetation removal kind of helps with regard to visibility between the two properties as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landon.
Sorry, the thing kept moving around. I just wanted to observe. We have a, a similar park here in East Springfield up on the South Sixty-Ninth. And it looks to be about the same size. And honestly, yes, kids go over there and play, but it's not overly crowded. And I suspect the same would apply. You know, Simon could comment, but I suspect the same would apply there. It'll get some use. It, it's great for the neighborhood, but it's not something that's going to draw from from quite, from a distance.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just in my experience, being at Will Amalane the last six and a half years and kind of, you know, we have had some, not necessarily a brand new park like this one. Although Will Amalane, Will Amalane has owned the property for nearly thirty years, but like a completely brand new location, we've done some rehabs and you know, some big improvements to some of our neighborhood parks. But typically, whatever we do, there's always, you know, people are like, oh, you know, something shiny and new and they want to go there. So there's always kind of like that bounce in terms of visitor numbers right at the start. So I think with Pierce Park, even though it's a neighborhood park and exposed to, you know, be a provision for those, you know, within the, within a quarter or a half mile kind of radius from the park that ultimately people, you know, within Springfield will, will hear about it and they'll want, and they'll want to go. But I think that after two or three months, it'll probably settle down. Some of those same people may still visit the park in the future. But I think ultimately, yeah, it'll settle down to be predominantly a neighborhood park. And hopefully beyond that, in terms of the kids being able to ride their bikes to the park and, and the bike playground too. Construction will probably end at the end of summer, start of fall, would be my guess. So you know, if construction was to end, say, April, May, then you've got a whole summer of, of people showing up. So but I think when, with construction ending in the fall, that, that mass use of a, a site of a park directly after is, is going to taper off pretty quickly as the, as the weather gets worse. Kind of doesn't sound very good to say it because obviously you want people to visit the parks. But I think that'll be a natural part of how visitation kind of tapers off once the park is complete.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I want to address. I would love to echo the concern with the parking because though it's not envisioned that people will park and come to this neighborhood park, I think we, we should maybe take a deeper look at that. In the Hayden Bridge area, there's not, there's a, a park at Page Elementary and Yolanda Elementary. When school is back in session, there are those families that have non-school age children and would like to take their kids to a park. And so this, in that area during school session, Paige and Yolanda Parks are off limits during school hours. And so I really think that because of that, this, I don't, I don't foresee the use of this park going down. And so I definitely hear the concerns of the neighbors. Knowing that this is medium density residential zoning currently, if, if memory serves correctly. My curiosity is if this was to remain that zone, how would vehicles access that property? Knowing that based upon the diagram, there is access, but across the E web bike path, which is on the top of a water main. And I would be curious to see if the plan originally was for road access to come in through a different area. And if so, what that would look like. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that we are in the middle of a housing shortage and potentially removing more land from housing, of potential housing. But my biggest concerns would be the, the parking because I, like I mentioned, I do not foresee the, it going down. And I do foresee that a lot of people will drive to come to this area. And you had mentioned that it's not intended for individual or kids that can drive themselves. And knowing that that's a, a neighborhood with a couple of elementary schools in the vicinity, a lot of families tend to flock to those areas. And so I'd be really concerned with the overage on the parking on the streets, the neighborhood streets. So I would love to see if we could address that a little bit further. Thank you.
Yeah, I could talk about the parking a little bit more, just, just in terms of like, yeah, I think I mentioned before about how we kind of see that rise in numbers for a brand new park, definitely. And then it does kind of taper off. But yeah, I, I understand people will still always drive even to a neighborhood park. You know, I've, I've got kids and I know that happens, you know, where parents set up playdates and so on from all over town and they, and they'll kind of rendezvous at one particular park. So I know that, I know that will happen. I know there will always be people that will drive to any neighborhood park and that's what we see. Typically, unusually, we don't provide parking, a parking lot for a neighborhood park. And even if we did on this location, I, I don't think we would imagine providing any more than say ten or twelve spaces anyway, if that was, if that was, if that space was available. But I think those ten or twelve spaces could fairly easily be accommodated within the existing neighborhood, particularly when the Marco, Marco Meadows development. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn here because obviously that is a, a private development, but it will have public streets. People will be allowed to park there. And there is the, the green space directly south of Pierce Park, which is within that development. And potentially around that green space, there is a potential on, on street parking there that is not directly outside someone's home. There's potentially some parking there. Obviously, you know, I don't know how people are going to park within that development. It's relatively dense, I guess. People with two cars, maybe they'll, they'll be parking on the street instead of driveways and garages. I, I, I don't know. But like I said, it is still classified as, as a neighborhood park. Most people that responded to the public open house and the, the questionnaire that we had online last year said, I think it's about eighty-three or eighty-five percent of people that responded said they would walk or cycle to the park. And I think there are maybe only two or three comments to the effect of having some concerns about parking. So obviously those are the people that responded, but that, that survey and the public open house was open, not just to people within the neighborhood, but it was open to anybody in Springfield. You know, we advertised that through social media resources and website too. So that, that comment period was open to many people even outside of the neighborhood. With regard to the zoning, medium density residential, I yeah, that might be a question more for Melissa to answer or Michael. I don't know. Obviously, yeah, I, I, I don't know. Uh, yeah, that might be a question more for Melissa uh, to answer, or Michael, I don't know, um, obviously, yeah, I, I, I don't know how you would access that, that parcel. Uh, by vehicle at the moment anyway, it's, it's kind of like an island that's surrounded by residences to the north. It's got the E-Web path to the south. There's no street connection to it right now. I can't imagine there would be any proposal for a new street to cross to such a small parcel for additional residences, but. Maybe uh, city planning staff have, have some comments in that regard.
Thanks, Simon. Um, Michael, did you have something you want to? To respond about the, the access? While you, sorry, I'm just going to interrupt. Uh, for the MDR zoning, I think that's a really great uh, point, Commissioner Bergen, um, especially since we have a housing shortage. Uh, my understanding too is the two thousand twelve Willamette Lane uh, comprehensive plan already had both sites um, planned for Pierce Park. And so I think um, since it was adopted or coordinated with the city that we were aware of that as well, but I'm going to defer to Michael. Without access.
Uh, yeah, uh, access to this MDR zone um, parcel is going to be difficult. Our, our development code. States that every lot and parcel is entitled to direct access to right-of-way, either through an easement or direct connection to the right-of-way. But this is a very landlocked parcel, so when this parcel was created, that consideration wasn't made for it. So right now, I, there is no. Um, direct access to right-of-way or uh, and access easement to this parcel. Um, we have made plans with some of the development and some of the housing that has gone into the north. Um, to set up some right-of-way in an east-west nature through those other um, parcels, but I don't have a conceptual local street map. Um, uh, as part of our TSP um, anymore that shows any local roads trying to touch this parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I will throw myself in the queue. Um, so. It looks like we are mostly discussing criterion B, um. One and two, one is the location, size, design, and operating char- characteristics of the use. Two is adequate and safe circulation for vehicular access to and from the proposed site. Um, and just as a point of clarification, this is not um, a zone change. This is a discretionary use, so um. This is definitely one of those issues. That isn't cut and dry, because it's discretionary, um, we're, we're judging uh, whether this use is compatible with. Uh, medium-density residential zoning, um, with things like traffic, noise, safety, light. Um, I share concern about vehicular access specifically because the um. The street parking will predominantly occur on a cul-de-sac, um, and I share concern about. Um, circulation of just, you know, those larger vehicles, the UPS trucks, the Amazon trucks, uh, school buses, fire trucks. Um, so I would like to hear more about um, those standards, um, Michael, um, perhaps not tonight, if we decide to extend it, but just voicing concern. There, um, I also wanted to uh, just again, thank the folks who came to share their concerns tonight, um. And I thank the folks who voiced their support in the survey that Willamette Lane um, added. Uh, there's a lot of enthusiasm for the park, um. It's adding something that we uh, lack in the community and in that neighborhood, uh, so a lot to consider. Um, are there any other um, criteria of approval? Um, that you would like to voice any concern for, or ask um, staff questions, or are we primarily really looking at criterion B? Commissioner Quivela, you put your video on. Oh, yep, there you go. Hand it over to you.
Uh, yes, I'm looking at the uh, it looks like the um. Combination of the site with the assessment map. That includes uh, Marcola Meadows subdivision, and it looks as if there could be. Pretty easily developed a crossing. Across um, the E-Web right-of-way from what's called Pierce Parkway through the uh, condemnation. Of a couple of lots in uh, Marcola Meadows, or uh. Through the purchase of those through the park, so that there could actually be the, the vehicular access for um. Perhaps developing it as residential property. Just thought I'd put that out. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, um, hearing none, uh, would the commission like to close the public hearing and/or the public record? Or continue the hearing and hold the record open to another date, and we can discuss this before hearing a motion, or somebody can just make a motion if you'd like. Commissioner Salazar.
Sorry, gotta, gotta get all the buttons uh, figured out. Um, yeah, I, I would like to hear back. I think Michael mentioned about checking with the um. The Fire Marshal about access, especially on Otto Street, to make sure that, to ensure that um. Vehicular access can allow larger vehicles um, at the end of that um, cul-de-sac. And before making any decisions, I would like to, I don't know if that would be in tail, leaving um. One or both open, but I, I don't feel comfortable making a decision until we hear back from um, Michael's research with the Fire Marshal.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar. I concur. Is there any other discussion or emotion? Commissioner Quivela, do you have your hand up newly, or is it a relic?
Lord.
This is my favorite part. This is when I feel like a teacher staring at the screen. Um. Okay, I, I move to um, continue the public hearing and hold the record open, um, let's say another week, um. Do I hear a second or discussion?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Buck.
Uh, Commissioner uh, McGinley, just to uh, interrupt, and I apologize, but if you, if the commission is leaving the hearing. And the record open, um, it has to be at least seven days out to a um, place certain. And then the date, time, and place, so you, maybe Brenda might have some ideas about uh, next uh, available meeting, and then you can put that into your motion for clarity.
I do have some suggestions.
Thank you, Mary Bridgette, and yes, Brenda would love to hear those.
Um, our next available meeting, we could hold, um. Sandy, are you still on the line?
Yes.
Okay. August third, we have the ninety minutes, and then Christine's thirty minutes, and then the CCI meeting, which is out at seven-thirty. Or August seventeenth. Or a whole new day to bring them in on an off week.
And just to clarify, you, you could um, continue the public hearing to a date, or. You could just leave the record open for seven days and allow staff to um, provide that information. So. It kind of depends if you want to allow people to come back and speak to you, or if just leaving the record open would be sufficient.
Is there any discussion here? Um, my motion included uh, keeping everything open. Um, I see Commissioner Gill.
You're muted.
Sorry, I thought I clicked it. Um, I lean toward keeping it open, because that information might. Trigger people the desire to provide. Input again, um, if we're getting additional information and. Um, and I would like us, after this decision of if we're going to move forward or not, to um. To um, make sure we have the opportunity to ask for the kinds of things we want uh, to request. More specifically, so staff has direction and the proponents can um, prepare as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill, Commissioner Quivela.
Yes, I support the motion and Commissioner Gill's comments. Um, I'd say let's call the uh, all the vote.
Okay, and just to clarify about the date to which the written record would be kept open, Sandy, was there a preference on the staff's side for either. The August third, August seventeenth, or another date?
Shortest possible.
Um. I think uh, my preference would be to go ahead for August third. Um, but I would like to. Let Mark or Melissa speak if they have a different preference.
I'm fine with August third, um, and I think we can gather some of the information and, and. Answers that folks want before, by then. Um, I did actually have a clarifying question, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask it, but. I do have a question. Mark, do you have a thought about the meeting, next meeting?
I just.
We're in the middle of them trying to make a motion, so let's.
I just wanted, I just wanted, I, I just wanted to check in on the hundred-and-twenty-day clock that we're required to make a decision on. I don't know if Melissa has that information available, just for. Uh, to inform the extension process, but just wanted to be recognized that there is a timeline with which we have to make this decision by.
Yeah, Mark, I saw your message. Unfortunately, I don't have that information on me right now, but I can find out immediately after the meeting. But I think we are in, um, we're okay, because as soon as they submitted it, I put this on the agenda.
Okay, hearing that, um, I would like to amend my motion um, to extend the public hearing to August third. Um, and extend the writ- written record um, to. Would this be August second at five P M., or would it be, sorry, August third at five P M.? Yes.
And. It would be seven days from tonight, so then the staff has, no. Mary Bridgette?
No, if the record is, if the public hearing is open, and then the written record is open, and so it will be open until the close of the public hearing on August third.
Okay, thank you, just for clarity. Go ahead, Sandy.
Um. So let's, if you could say August third at seven P M., you, we'll have to rearrange the agenda a little bit, but I think that will be the best, is to say August third at seven P M. will be when the hearing is continued to that. Meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. Um, I move to continue the public hearing to August third. And hold the public record open until August third at seven P M.
A second.
Moved by myself, seconded by Commissioner Buck. Um, Brenda, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Commissioner McGinley.
I.
Commissioner Landon.
I.
Commissioner Quivela.
Yes.
Commissioner Bergen.
I.
Commissioner Gill.
I.
Commissioner Salazar.
I.
Commissioner Buck.
I.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand.
I believe that question came from Commissioner Bergen.
Yes, thank you. My, um, I. I'm not sure that I have an answer for you, so that doesn't really help you. Um, I guess I was just making sure that my concerns were out there, and then hopefully it would have triggered somebody else's concerns, but. Um, I think the biggest concerns hearing was um, the emergency vehicle access potential, and then um, a lot of conversation about parking.
Okay, um, thank you, everybody, for um, working through that with us. Um, these. Again, quasi-judicial proceedings are, are very legally bound, and we're on Zoom too, in a pandemic. Um, so we will resume this conversation August third. Um, for any of the neighbors listening, uh, you have the ability to provide public comment. You can do so on Springfield Organ Speaks. You can contact the staff, um, or uh, you're welcome to come to the art, the August third meeting to provide testimony again, so. Uh, look forward to seeing everybody again August third. Um, I see Commissioner Bergen's hand.
Yes, thank you. Uh, for clarification, will the August third meeting, um, and for those, our community members here, will the August third meeting be on Zoom again, or will we be meeting in person?
It looks like from Sandy's nodding, it'll be on Zoom. Is that correct? Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Bergen. We'll be back here on Zoom. Um, our next item on the agenda um, is reports of city council meetings. We have many reports of city council meetings, um. It's been quiet over there, it's their own break. It's okay if we don't have any. Alrighty, um, what I will note in this item is that um, Councillor Pitts is our city council liaison, so Commissioner Buck, uh, we usually have. Councillor Pitts here, and at the next meeting, I'll just have him introduce himself, um, so that he knows you're here. He should know that you're here, because we interviewed you, but just so.
Chairman McGinley. Um, yes, council's on recess, so you, you wouldn't have any um, reports from them. They're on recess through September, uh, they come back in September.
Yes, thank you, Brenda.
Yeah.
Okay, um, our next item is any business from members of the Planning Commission. Commissioner Quivela.
Uh, yes, first of all, I wanted to express my welcome to our newest commissioner, Commissioner Buck. We look forward to working with you, and I wanted to say that our uh, work here, we all have a unique perspective, and we bring. Our knowledge and points of view to shape what we want the future of Springfield to be for housing, business, industry, and recreation. And your portion of personal point of view in regard to those is very important, and we really look forward to hearing it. And uh, then a couple other things, uh, I'd like to mention is, um, uh. I attended a celebration for a new piece of property that's called the Filbert Grove Cooperative. And this used to be what was known as Patrician Park, and as you recall, we voted four to three. To support the residents of Patric- Patrician Park in maintaining their housing, and we were overruled four to two by the city council. However, Homes for Good, Commissioner Joe Bernie and others came together to assist the folks. To be able to purchase the property, and that land is now going to be uh, held by the folks who live on it in perpetuity. So I wanted to pass that along with folks, so instead of renters, those folks are going to be owners to the property. So, uh, one other small item is I noted that the register guard had uh, in their um. Notices that they have, not the legal notices, but just the notices of what's occurring, that they repeatedly. Uh, said that we were meeting on Monday instead of on Tuesday, and I did actually try to talk to them, and it didn't seem to help, because they still had it. In the paper yesterday morning that we were meeting today, so, or yesterday, so, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quivilla. I have a couple items. The 2021 Joint Oregon Washington Planning Conference is happening October 13th through 15th. It'll be virtual and we'll have all things planning. The schedule is out. I believe there is a training budget for the planning commission. So if anybody is interested, contact staff or I can send out the link. The other thing I wanted to say that I thought was interesting today, the Oregon Department of Transportation announced an equitable engagement compensation policy and program that's effective July, that went into effect July 1, 2021. And this will compensate Oregonians who participate in ODOT engagement and input activities. So I think just in our capacity as the CCI and thinking about always meaning goal one and how things are changing, that may be worth a look. And if you would like to know more about it and how the state is pursuing compensating folks for their time, please let me know and I'll send you a link. Commissioner Gill.
I just wanted to share that Department of Land Conservation and Development has put together a very short guidance document regarding the middle housing. So House Bill 2001 in relationship to historic resources that I think is pretty useful. So if you are interested in how multi-unit housing can fit within historic properties and maintain that historic character that it might be of interest to you. It is on oregonheritage.org website and also available through Department of Land Conservation and Development. And I'm happy to share it if people want me to, I can send it to Brenda and she can pass it along.
Commissioner Quivilla.
Please do share. Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Gill, I think if you could just send that to Brenda to distribute to all of us, I think everyone would be interested. Any other business from the planning commission? Okay, our next item is business from the Development and Public Works Department.
Good evening, commissioners. I've been interjecting at various points tonight, but I am the interim planning manager for the city. And I wanted to report back on a question from Commissioner Bergen. She had asked about when we're going to have the council agenda calendar within Springfield Oregon Speaks. And so we've been working with People Speak who created the Springfield Oregon Speaks, and they hope to have that complete by the end of this month. So hopefully, your next meeting, we'll be able to report that it is available for your use. We are also looking at coming back in person. We will not be ready for that August 3rd meeting, but we are hopefully aiming to see if we can try out the technology and allow for people to continue to provide comments remotely while we are in person and to be able to watch it remotely through Zoom. So it's a little bit different than when we did it before. So we want to make sure that that technology is working. We're hoping that we can have you back in person August 17. We do have some pretty busy agendas coming up. So we're adding this continued public hearing to what was already a pretty full agenda on August 3rd. We are coming back with you, Commissioner Quivilla. You're going to be so excited to meet again with the hearings official on that sub remand to process some. Actually, it had been appealed up to the Court of Appeals and there's some some further things that the commission and hearings official need to take care of. And so that is going to be also on August 17th. So I'm just giving you fair warning that this there's going to be some pretty heavy meeting up. And so just make sure you've got time on your schedule for full night of meeting on those two dates as well as the first meeting in September on September 8th. So that's the way things are. But that's what I have to share with you tonight.
Thank you, Sandy and Commissioner Buck. I hope you haven't been scared away. This is a really busy time to be a Springfield Planning Commissioner and Springfield Planning Staff and Legal Staff and Engineering Staff. Springfield Staff in general. So you made it through your first meeting. Commissioner Bergen, we're thrilled you're here with us for another term, even if it's your first. And I look forward to seeing everybody on August 3rd for a pretty jam packed night. Thank you, everybody, for tonight.
Thank you.
This meeting.
Thank you. It was great. I learned I learned a lot. I apologize for my connection dropping me for about five, five minutes. Comcast does that to me.
It happens.
Do give me a call if you have continued issues with your iPad.
Yeah, I I just I have some.